It's actually six o'clock, so we will go ahead and start our meeting. We stand to the Pledge of Allegiance and the Standing for the Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heaven and father, you know more than any that we are absolutely at unprecedented times. And every generation has its moments where they're tested, I think. Every generation has its moments where they don't know what's going to happen next. They're kind of fearful, they're kind of anxious, they're wondering, they just don't know. But you've been the God through it all, and you've seen this country and this community rise through all those challenges. And so we pray for your guidance and wisdom and strength to help us rise through this again. And it's so heartbreaking to know that there's people right now as we stand here that are alone in a hospital room, or a nursing home, or their own home. Give them comfort, Father. Be with them, strengthen them, and give them your presence so they know beyond a shadow of a doubt that they are not alone, and that they have the comfort of the great one who can provide comfort that we can only imagine. We pray for your wisdom in this meeting. We pray for your guidance to help us make decisions in the midst of all this chaos that will be the best for this community so that when we come out of this, and you know we will, that we will come out of this stronger and with more things to look forward to than we ever have before. We thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right. Well, if people can't tell, these meetings are continually different than they've ever been before in the history of council meetings. As you can see, these, I don't know what exactly you can see right now if you're watching from home, but we've got laptops up, we're utilizing Zoom so we can allow some people, like our beloved city manager, to attend this meeting from home. Because he's certainly an at-risk individual, and we want the safety for him and his wife at its utmost importance. And I convey to the council too, and the attendees, that safety is paramount, okay? And so, you see, we have a gentleman here who's wearing a mask, and he's definitely fitting the role for this time that we're in. But just because we're having a meeting doesn't mean we're flying in the face of or disregarding the conditions we're in right now and the need for social distancing. As you see, we're all spread apart. We actually only have three attendees in our room, so our room is balanced in terms of space. And actually, all three attendees are not even, actually, pretty much what you'd call essential attendees. Our assistant city manager, our city attorney, and our reporter, so...
All sitting at safe distance.
Exactly, all sitting, more than six feet apart, or just, yeah, very close to it, so... We're trying. We're trying, because we also still need this, we still see the need to make sure we get you the information that you deserve. And we want to, we still see the need, obviously, to conduct city business and to ensure that everything continues to function as it should. So with that being said, Jan, I would ask that you do a roll call.
Brandon Almore.
Present.
Bob Leahy.
Here.
Nathan Conklin.
Here.
Tim Heiss.
Here.
Tito Farias.
Here.
All right, moving along the consent agenda. Trust that you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What questions or comments, if any, do we have? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept.
I want a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Name. Consent agenda approved. Department reports. I certainly have some things that I want to get to. Well, some of the things I want to address are actually in the agenda. One thing I didn't want to mention that needs to be discussed or actually brought to your attention. We had a very unfortunate incident last week at a wastewater plant, which I'm sure Tim's probably aware of. We actually had a, we had an individual that was part of the wastewater project that passed away, a 31-year-old. And there were significant concerns, obviously, that it was COVID-related. And we had the test results come back today, and it was not COVID. And in fact, the person that was rooming with him, because he's not from here, he's actually, either, I'm not sure if he's from Richmond or from Indy. There's some dispute on that, but he's not from Randolph County. And the gentleman that he was staying with, obviously, there was concern that he also could have tested positive COVID. He tested negative for COVID. So we had the blessing of our county health director, and also the gentleman that spearheaded, the vice president, Jackson, asked for my blessing as well as mayor. Both the county health director and Dr. Ken Swinski and myself gave them the okay to resume operations because there were no confirmed cases of COVID, and so hence they can resume operation of the wastewater project. It's a mixed bag because it's heart-wrenching that there's a 31-year-old that lost his life in this, due to double pneumonia. And, you know, his family, I can't imagine what his family's going through right now. And then, on the other side of the ledger, from, you know, the gentleman, the personnel that are out there currently, there was a bit of, a little bit of comfort, if you will, for what it's worth, that it was not COVID-related and that there are not other individuals that they put at extremely high risk. And so that project is resumed. Be a certain amount of crew back on the site tomorrow, not full strength, but it will ramp back up in that direction. So that is the latest on that. And then, we certainly have some more enlightening stuff that we'll be sharing with you toward the end of new business. Department heads, non clerk, Jan, any updates would you like to share at the moment?
No.
Okay. Council members, Tito, we'll start with you. Anything you'd like to share?
Don't have, I don't have a lot, but... I was reviewing some of the materials in our packet, and I saw that the police are not taking calls for assistance at the court phone number. Why is that, and...
The court is shut down for two weeks, I believe it was, during the, during the most recent government order, so that would be...
So, please chat. The reason we're taking those calls on the court line is because there is an automatic answering machine on that line, and it frees up the business lines for both police and fire if they're calling a specific number, if they need assistance, food, or financial assistance, or anything like that. So because it's a recorded line and that there's an answering machine already on that line for court, and the courts are shut down, we can convert the message to what it needed to be for COVID, and it's a specific number that they're able to utilize for providing assistance and resources to community citizens.
Do you know what I have hands so people can get it through this admission?
Uh, no, but I can go look on the window of the city building. It's out there.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Oh, I should be late. My sent you a message.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 964-5968.
Nah. So it's 964-5968. Correct, for people who want to call the police.
And there are flyers all over town marketing the community resources that we have to do with that number on.
Okay. I had a question on the appropriation report. I think it's under Wastewater Construction Fund 635, Division 070. I saw that the unexpected balance is listed as negative. Please chat. Unexpected balance listed as negative, $2,317,000.
That's because the, the report, the, that fund is not appropriated. Those aren't appropriated funds, so it's going to be negative because it ought to have been zero. And so you subtract from zero, you're going to get negative.
And just for the public, it's unappropriated because it's a grant? Or why?
Yeah, I mean, it's not our, it's the project, and it, you know, it's wastewater project, and that's funded by, you know, we put in the request, and it is, it is a grant, and it's also a loan. But that money's separate from the appropriated funds that are normally...
Okay. Then I also noticed Department, I don't, sorry, I don't know the Department numbers and codes. Department 190. There's several funds in there, 707, 89, 710, 711, 12345678, 1822, 2325, and 726. Lots of payroll, pension, and health, and other insurance benefits. They're all showing negative unexpended balances.
Again, those aren't appropriated funds. That's an in-and-out fund because the money goes in as needed from the other funds, which are appropriated, goes into the payroll fund, and then it's paid out. So that's why they're all negative. They're not really negative.
Okay, good. Two more questions. One is about the sewage plant construction claims. We see, we see the different invoices and things, and the consultants asking for the payment. Who is the Union City Responsible Technical Officer? Do we have someone who sort of verifies that it's a, you know, good faith? Really, we are receiving these materials from Union City? Really, this network was done? I mean, we're just taking the word from consultants? Or is there someone on our side that's like, verifying?
Monty, did you want to, did you hear Tito's question? Oh, I think you're unmuted.
Yeah, we have a full-time inspector out there that, from Midwestern Engineers, that makes sure that materials are put in, that the specific work is done. He does reports daily on the progress out there and what they do, and it even includes the weather at the time, and that, so yeah, we pay for full-time inspection on that, which we're required to do by USDA.
Okay, good. Thank you, Monty. And Monty, thank you, Monty. And the last, my last question was about the EDA loan to Eco Vehicle Systems. Last, we had heard, a city council meeting was that they were going to have an audit in March, and follow-ups, I just want to learn an update on what else happened.
It was obviously with the events with COVID that laid out, it actually did take place Friday, which is when Kent Anderson from Kent Consulting consulted with, I forget my phone, it was a gentleman, it wasn't Rob, it was a gentleman with Eco. And so Kent should have hopefully something for me this week in terms of what he verifies, and then at which point they went up to submit a check to ask for the remaining amount, based on whatever job they're creating. Or showed as of December 31st, 2019.
And I do understand that they closed because of their not considered nonessential, so that's probably the reason for that.
Actually, I don't think they're closed.
Well, they had a skeleton crew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. A middle.
There's a few working, but not as well.
Right.
That's all.
Not a good question. Tim?
Uh, don't really have anything.
Me?
Well, I hope everybody stays sane. Stuff, it's kind of interesting times. I like to kind of tell people what's going on job-wise. I know that I have heard that Workhorse is taking applications. I've not heard that directly from Workhorse, but for anybody that is potentially laid off, that could be helpful. Another one is the road crew that's working here on 28 all the way to 27 is...
Milestone?
Milestone, thank you. Milestone is hiring, and maybe temporary, but could potentially lead into full-time positions for anybody that is potentially looking. And my understanding is they're essential, so they're going to be working no matter what. I hear they have upper teens pay is what the starting is, so essentially, there could be some ways for people to catch up a little bit if need be. Otherwise, my thoughts and prayers go out to everybody stuck at home that need help. If you need help, feel free to call the city, still the city building line, or the line that was provided by Tito, and we definitely get some resources together. That's it.
Bob? Or Tim actually did something, sorry, Tim did.
Yeah, it really is not, not, it never shattered, but would like to comment on the businesses. And we talked about essential, nonessential businesses. My employer is considered an essential, and one thing I'd really like to implore people is that as they use the essential services to do their best to be respectful of people that work in those places. You know, like, I, like everyone else, have made trips to the grocery store and other places, and I've seen a lot of people that are really doing a great job here. And I think, I think our numbers in this community and the county overall are bearing that out. And I've seen a lot of people being very respectful, but I just implore everybody to always think in terms of showing the utmost respect for other people. And the best I've heard described is, is treat everybody like you are positive.
Wow.
And that to this, so...
Like you're a positive.
Like you're a positive with the exception of the fact that you're not quarantined, or that you should be at that point. But just treat it like the assumption that you are, and that you do not want to spread. Don't touch your face. That's it. And, but also do your best not to expose other people and make other people uncomfortable, quite frankly. And I've, I've felt people have been very respectful in my store and haven't really had a problem with people not getting it. But I think that's one reason it's made this community great, is people kind of have that attitude anyway. But I just want to just stress that, to really think about the people that are serving you and that provide services in your community. Because if they're not able to provide that, if something happens and they're not able, you know, if I became positive for COVID, my store would close. And so those, that essential service is now available.
As you read.
And not only that, my revenue, and it might mean the business is gone. That's one of the things, some businesses, it's a big struggle for a lot of people anyway. We have some businesses that could be at risk, but that could put a business under. Not be able to survive, so appreciate everybody's consideration in that.
Great point. Bob?
I don't have anything to say.
Brandon?
I just would like to add to what Tim was just saying there. I know many in our communities are probably going to be receiving a potentially stimulus check here in the near future. You know, take care of your four walls, make sure your rent and mortgage is paid, your utilities are paid. But look to use a percentage of that maybe in the community here. You know, frequent a business that you may not have otherwise, and spend some money here in the community. You know, allow that stimulus money to stimulate our local economy. So that's one thing I would like to kind of add to what Tim just said there. The other thing, a couple of other things. So Randolph County Solid Waste Management, we had a meeting scheduled for April 6th that was canceled due to COVID-related issues. As far as I know, I tried to get a follow-up with Shanda Solomon, the director of the Randolph County Solid Waste Management. I believe, and I didn't hear back from her today, but I believe Pollution Solution is closed currently, and it's not?
I actually had Scrap Metal to take, I took over last week. I don't know, I believe they're owned by the same group. I know Scrap is available. I'm not 100% sure about Pollution Solution.
Okay. I wasn't able to confirm that today, but I thought with the travel advisors that are out, or the state hall advisors, that it was closed, but I'm not 100% sure about that. But I can certainly follow up about it. And then, the other thing is, there's a, I believe it's the 26th, there was a, or the 25th, Saturday the 25th, there was supposed to be a paper shred day. I believe that would be canceled as well at Pollution Solution. It's the only thing I have today. Lots of cancellations, just like everywhere else in the world right now.
Well, thank you. Monty, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Just quickly, the Columbia Street Sidewalk Project proceeding down there, they've got some stormwater work to do in that, so it's proceeding a little slower now. But they have laid first section of concrete down there towards the curve. Also, they've got the barrels on Columbia Street now, they're going to be running two-way traffic down that northbound lane. So nearby drives through there, just drive slowly.
Sorry, brother men. Now you guys know what I go through.
So yeah, just use caution down there in that construction area, and we'll get to get through that. They will be running, closing it for about 10 days at some point, and I know you're using Howard Street as the detour again. But the water valves are in, the water valve that was south on Columbia a little bit yet, that is in. And I think that's about all we have at this point.
That's wonderful update. Yeah, clearly did a wonderful job.
Yep. Um, I got a question for you.
Yeah, Nick has a question for you.
Hey, Monty, is there, I've had some people ask, is there a reason why traffic's being sent down Plum, not Howard?
I don't know, Howard was the designated detour. Is the detour sign at Plum?
It's at Plum, and it's blocked from Plum to Howard. You cannot go eastbound.
Well, then I don't know. I'll get with Brad Witt from Endot tomorrow.
I just know if any truck tries to go down there and make the turn from Plum to Pearl, there's going to be problems.
Exactly, which is why we designated Howard, but...
Good call.
I'll get with Endot and see what they're, why they're doing there.
Thank you, bud. Ryan, did you anything that you wanted to...
No.
Okay. Well, and city attorney, I'm sorry, for anybody watching for the first time. No presenters on the agenda, and we have no full business to cover at this moment, so moving along to new business. Jan, if you, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. I forgot because you stepped in late.
I said, sorry, the meeting got a lot better when you stepped in. Derek, if anything that you'd like from a school perspective?
Yeah, well, I'd like to apologize to the council first for being late. This is probably the first meeting I've ever been late to, so strange times for strange happenings, that's for sure. As I'm sure we're all aware, schools have been officially closed now for the rest of the school year, so especially for us seniors. We're saddened at the loss of these last two months of our senior year. However, we're staying strong and positive during these times. I know, on behalf of all the seniors, including myself, much appreciation to the Union City Fire Department and the Union City Police Department for putting up some senior recognition, especially on social media to honor us. I thought that was very nice of them. All the seniors are very appreciative of that, and we enjoy seeing that when we come into town, especially our athletic pictures at the Fire Department. I came by and saw that, I thought that was really neat. Providing some other school perspective, I know that the seniors are getting a little antsy, they want to go out and be active. However, we're all kind of been, you know, told to stay home. However, I've had a great portion of working with the Community Food Pantry over Winchester. So this will actually be, this upcoming Thursday, will be the fourth Thursday in a row, I brought seniors and National Honor Society members over to the Community Food Pantry and axed together food wagons to help those who are food insecure in Randolph County. I think pretty much each time, we've helped over 20 families who are food insecure, so... I just want to share that with the community, that, you know, the seniors and some of the other amazing students over at the high school are doing their part to give back. I think I also mentioned last time that I was going to give blood. Whoever did that, I haven't given blood in a while, so you know, I was a little nervous of the needle, but you know, they took my blood and all that kind of stuff. I also had an amazing opportunity to talk with them, with the organization that was running that, about what we could do to get one of those mobile blood drives over here towards the high school. Because I know we, every year at the high school, do a spring blood drive, while with school being closed, that reduces the options for students at the high school to give blood. So I actually, she got back with me, the lady that's kind of in charge. I was actually working with the Community Blood Centers of Dayton, who originally, you know, does their blood drive, so they're fantastic here. Somebody from the high school was interested in making sure that students could give blood. So she's working with me on finding a date to where we can bring over some mobile blood donation vehicles set up in the high school parking lot, and allowing seniors, you know, seniors or any other students who are interested in giving blood at certain times, taking safety precautions into effect, temperature checks and all that, to go on to the mobile vehicles and donate blood, so I thought that was really cool. This is super successful. I know I've been talking with a teacher or two over Winchester that I know about maybe doing the same thing over there, getting one of these mobile vehicles set up in their high school parking lot and letting their Winchester students donate blood. I also am the District 9 FFA president, so I cover 15 FFA chapters in 15 different schools all around Richmond and Muncie. So I've also kind of talked with the Community Blood Centers of Dayton that if we can make it work in Union City and Winchester, I don't see why we couldn't work it at all these other schools, which I think would be super cool to get mobile blood donation centers at all 15 schools that I cover.
Will it be students only, or will it be open up for public as well?
It could be open up to public. Right now, I just was opening up to students because I think we have one here in Union City pretty recently for the community. So I just knew that there was a whole bunch of students who hadn't given blood in a while, and that I'd be able to get the majority of them to go give some blood. It all just depends on how many people we can run through. If there's empty spots, heck yeah. You know, if we can get some of the community people to come out and give blood, that would be perfect. So if there's any open spots that students are able to take out for one reason or another, then yeah, definitely it'll be open up to the community to help give blood. I know when I was talking with them, that just in Indiana alone, or maybe just the four surrounding states, that they have 10,000 units of blood less than they usually do during this time. And of course, blood goes to help anybody undergoing treatment or any type of medical work. So this blood is super important, and we all got it, you know, we can all give blood, or at least the majority of people can give blood. So I think it's definitely a really cool thing that some high school students are working on, so definitely stay tuned for that. And yeah, if there's some empty spots, I'll definitely get with the city council and some community. Community people, get it out on social media and get people signed up for that. That's all I had, you know, stay safe, stay healthy.
Is there a word or update on what's going to happen with graduation?
Oh, that'd be perfect, yeah. Actually, as soon as we got the news about school being closed for the rest of the school year, I went up, I had a meeting anyway with Mr. Black, who's our school superintendent, to talk about using the high school parking lot for this mobile blood drive. Just from them, from the administration side, seniors right now are the number one priority to figure out what to do about graduation, what to do about the usual ceremonies for recognizing all the hard work seniors have put in over these four years of high school. I know they briefly mentioned at least Johnston's, which is the company that usually does the graduation capse de downs, that runs a lot of that. They suggested to a lot of schools maybe setting up some type of, you know, like parade where all the seniors are inside vehicles, so they're not, you know, they're not exposed to anybody else. And like one at a time, allowing the vehicles to come up to like an outdoor stage, coming up, again, one at a time to receive their diploma, and, you know, keeping that level of separation. I know that the administration has also been talking about potentially the drive-in over Winchester that for some of the students like Valad Victorin and senior class president, they usually give some type of speech during graduation. And that's something super important that we want to make sure that we can still do. So I know, maybe we could film something with Kiss TV and then maybe...
We could tap into the digital that's in there. I'd love to see that, all the counties do that, weather permitting, one day at a time, and that'd be awesome.
Awesome. Wow. By golly, I haven't worked out there. But yeah, they talked about going over there, flashing on the big screen some of the recorded material, whether it's speeches or anything from the administration. And then, you know, everybody can turn on their radios and all that kind of stuff, listen to us when we're not outside. So there's definitely plans in place. The administration has made it their priority to figure something out for us seniors. So that's, that's awesome that you asked that, just to, you know, to remind the seniors, hey, you know, your administration cares about you. They're saddened at the loss of this rest of the year as much as we are as seniors. So they're figuring something out, and they're going to make sure that we get everything that, you know, is deserving to us, so... We'll keep fine, and we'll make good things happen. So that's what I have.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
I apologize, we are no longer live. The Zoom meeting ran out. It actually stopped cold. So if you're watching... So if you're watching this, it's because you're watching the team version now, because our live session went kaput on Zoom. So we will still, Monty is actually with us now via my cell phone, my speakerphone.
It's not too long.
No, no, you're good. No, the Zoom, again, we're making the best we can with technology. This is the first time we utilize Zoom. It had a time span that I wasn't aware of that ran out early, so we will fix it the next time around if we have to utilize it again.
Yes, my understanding is on Zoom, it's 40 minutes or 45 minutes free. And then only if you have an account and you're paying, do they allow you to go on.
Okay. Well, it makes taxpayers feel better, being too tight to pay for this. So anyway, we'll move along to new business. Jan, if you would, I'll turn this over to you to start us.
Okay, the first item under new business is Resolution 2020-R-04, additional appropriations. This meeting is also serving as a public hearing for additional, for this additional appropriation request. The additional appropriation request is for 1.3 million to be taken from the general fund to cover the agreed settlement from, or the agreed settlement that the city has with Performance Services.
So are there any questions or comments for the public hearing portion? If not, I would...
So just to make it clear to the public who may not recognize that name, it's about the payment of the settlement regarding the winter bonds, regarding the winter bonds.
There's no questions or other comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-R-04, which is the additional appropriation resolution stating, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore see Section 1, be it ordained or resolved by the Common Council of Union City, Randolph County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same, which is other services and charges. As Jan stated, it requested about 1.3 million to satisfy in full the litigation as basically presented by the councilman and by Jan. So I hereby entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move, we approve Resolution 2020-R-04, additional appropriation.
We have a first, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Jan, would you take the roll call vote?
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Lehey.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
Officially closes our public hearing. Please note, it is with sincere apology that we were not live, that there was zero intention, zero intention for that not to be live. But also please note that we still are bound by the rules of litigation, that we are not able to discuss the particulars of the trial or the verdict or the agreed settlement. And we're not allowed to discuss the details of that. We are bound, unfortunately. But it is through open door policy, people do have citizens have the right to be informed and there is a protocol for citizens to follow if they so wish to have information regarding the litigation for what can be provided. So that's the extent that I can convey regarding that matter. Ordinance number 2020-07, which is an ordinance amending salary ordinance for stay-at-home pay for declared emergency. This obviously is in light of the pandemic and when the state declared a stay-at-home shelter, we had to change our ways and change our ways quickly, because we had city workers that were used to congregating at morning meetings and they were gathering and then they were working in pairs and sometimes three on the job and just, we had to reassess where we were at with them and we had first and foremost to ensure their safety. And so like many other communities, we sent them home, but they were required to be in an on-call status. In other words, if Brad needed them for anything, and he did, he did reach out to them at various points over the two weeks, that their help, their services were required, but it was required in a sense where they were still not with others. I mean, they were still separated. And in fact, we've been able to, Brad and I have been able to work out through discussion. You know, he's got them doing what is deemed essential services now. Like sometimes even just filling a pothole, but it's essential because of emergency personnel driving through and making sure of their safety or removing brush pile down the street because if you have bad storm and the brush pile gets taken by water, moved in the middle of the street, then it presents a hazard to, you know, emergency personnel. So it's different things that we've tried to deem, how can this be essential or looked upon as being essential? And then we seek to have them go take care of those tasks, so that we stay within the spirit of the guidelines set forth by the governor, but at the same time still get some work accomplished. So this ordinance number 2020-07, again before the Common Council for the City of Union City, State of Indiana, it's an ordinance of the Common Council, the city of Union City, amending ordinance 2020-06, which is a 2020 salary ordinance for appointed officers, employees for all departments of the city. And so again, in essence, what this declares is amending the salary ordinance, so it gives us the ability to pay these individuals that were in on-call status and were required at various points over these two weeks to do various functions for the city. With that being said, hold back. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move, we approve ordinance 2020-07, ordinance to amend salary ordinance, our stay-at-home pay for declared emergency.
We have a first, we have a second.
I'll second.
Jan, would you take the roll call vote?
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Lehey.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
Would be who wants to suspend the rules?
I'll move, we suspend rules. First, second, read it.
I'll second. We have a first and a second. Jan, roll call vote.
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Lehey.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, we hereby entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move, we approve ordinance 2020-07, amendments, amendment, ordinance amending salary ordinance for the salary and their stay-at-home pay for declared emergency on the second reading.
All right, you got it. I'll second. We have a first and a second. Jan, once again, I'm so sorry, roll call vote.
Okay, Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Lehey.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
All right. Motion's answered. Okay, now on to better and brighter things. We have basically approval to apply for grant funding from Oprah. And Monty, can you hear us, my friend? Okay, let me turn you way up. Okay. You know, if you would like to address, just because I know you've worked very diligently on this process regarding the $250,000 for the Community Development Block Fund.
Uh, yes, that's, that's grant funding that the state has just recently, that I came up with to assess the local businesses during this time they're down because of the quarantine. So we intend to apply for the $250,000 to be used to support businesses here. They have to apply for that, file a letter of need. And we have three businesses that so far have come and purchased on that. So this is, this would be the approval needed to go ahead and file for that funding to assess those businesses. We would have, our cost would be $2,000 for the grant administration. But that would be HFR.
So $2,000 to gain $250,000 for our local industry?
Yes.
Do we have any questions or comments from council?
What would be the approval process for the people applying for this? Is it embedded or?
Yeah, they have subrators where they assess the number of employees and it has to be, employees have to be 51% low-bon income. And that they, of course, check the, what they consider the viability of company tiers. So yeah, they would have to, they'd have to fall into all those parameters to be eligible.
So the city council and us would not have to make these decisions, Oprah's group would be doing it?
No, no, they would, the state would make the decisions about whether they qualify or not.
Thanks, Monty.
No problem.
Any others? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve, to gain approval to apply for grant funding from Oprah.
I will make motion to approve to apply for grant funding from Oprah.
We have first, we have a second.
I second that.
We have first and a second. Jan, would you take the roll call vote?
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Lehey.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
Thank you, Monty. Again, on to bigger and better things. This is not actually something I'm asking money for right now, but as you remember, about a month ago, I said I wouldn't be presenting this project to you. This is what's called, going forward, Vision Corner. It's the Apothecary Building that we all know about in town. Tomorrow, I talked to Dave Keizer right before the council meeting. He is actually submitting our grant application tomorrow to World Development. Thank you, totally blessed. Thank you, Monty. And so that would be for the purchase of the building. If the purchase, or if the grant proposal goes through World Development, then we would come back to you for the match, which would be, the initial match is $26,000 for this project, for us to acquire the rights to the building and be able to move forward with basically hammer and getting work done. It's a, I'm trying to think what the amount was at World, 72, is that right?
Yes, 72,000.
72,000 is what the grant, the loan, or the grant would be for, grant, not loan.
Yes.
But this is only the first step. It's $750,000 in total that Dave Keizer will be applying for and with the help of Monty, for this corner project. And the corner project, what it entails, it's a multifaceted project. Because when I, before I ran, or before I took office, when I was running, I tried to sit down with various local entities in the community. And there was a common theme amongst all the different folks I talked to. One was housing, obviously, that we've already discussed. Another one was from our corporate leadership and every CEO I talked to was, when our folks come to town, our folks being people that work with our companies, they have nowhere to stay. And in fact, the one gentleman I talked to at the time, at that moment, one was staying in Greenville and one was staying in Richmond. So not only were we missing out on the dollars from the city perspective, we were missing out on the county perspective. And sometimes these guys only stay a couple nights, sometimes they can stay weeks or even months. So that was one problem. The other issue is obviously workforce development, training of local personnel. The other one is partnering with our schools, the opportunities that maybe we've missed out on over the years and not pointing fingers at anybody or any individual or any administration, school or city, you name it. But there's always a room to be better. There's always room to grow, because the next person comes into this position after me is gonna have a lot of things he can do better than I have, okay? And we should always hope that, so on and so forth. And so one of the best, I looked at the strengths of their school. What do we do well? What do we do, we do a lot of things well, but what do we do exceptionally well? Kiss TV is one. That's unique. There's only four of those outfits in the entire state of Indiana. Locally owned, school-operated, cable access television station. That's unique. So okay, that's a unique characteristic, so that's, and it's something that they do well, so it's a strength. Well, entities nowadays are big into collaboration too. So what's somebody else, who's somebody else that does something like that and does it well? Ball State University. I, no, transparency, I did graduate from Ball State, okay? However, truth be told, and look it up if you're curious, Ball State has and has had for years one of the leading telecommunications program in the United States, not Indiana, not the Midwest, the United States. David Letterman's alma mater, for what it's worth. And so what better opportunity than to try to partner those two entities together? So doggone COVID, for many reasons, we actually already had meetings set up to where our kids were going to Ball State in March and then Ball State's kids were coming here in April. Did I have that right or was the other way around? That was right, yeah. And to work together. And our kids were gonna attend the live taping over there at Ball State of a show and that was just, but we're still gonna do it. It's just the initial step got missed because of, you know, the school shutting down. But that is what the future holds in terms of Ball State kids, because in time, I met with the dean of communications and I met a couple times with the interim chair of the telecommunications department. And their big initiative right now with their kids is immersive learning. They want their kids getting out into the community. And so they saw this as a golden opportunity. It was like, yes, let's partner. And so the idea is to have a studio down here, and this is just part of the building. The first two sections of the building will be a video studio, media studio, à la Times Square. So when you're driving by, you will see kids actually in there doing video projects and maybe giving the news downtown on the corner, with the original glass front of the building restored, so everybody can see what's going on, to pay homage to the architecture of the building, but also to create interest in downtown and start to spark life into the community. So the idea is for them to be able to do video projects together downtown in those first two studios. And then the other thing that we do extremely well at the school is Apache, the apparel shop, the printing shop. They do extremely well at the school, but I want them to have a bigger platform. And I'd love for them to have a retail platform downtown. And because they do a lot of printing, they have a lot of printing capabilities. In fact, it needs to be stated right now, are they not, or is there not a 3D printer at the school that's helping print masks for COVID-19? There are four. Four printers? Okay. I'm talking to our cameraman, by the way. I'm talking to the air staff. So, so yeah, so I mean, they play a critical role throughout the year for the school in many facets. And so it's an opportunity for us to give them a bigger platform and to have like a late afternoon, early evening hours down there in the building to where they, people can stop and say, hey, I'd love to have, I've got this idea, I'd love to have this printed or what can you do for me here? Because they can do stuff beyond apparel, correct, Derek?
Oh, yeah.
What do they do beyond apparel?
They do large-sized banners, posters. I know, like I said, I'm the District 9 FFA president, so we do a lot of events that uses that kind of stuff. So I had them printing large banners. I was putting up on, you know, like stands and all that kind of stuff. So they do that side of it and they do hats and cups and coffee mugs and all sorts of, pretty much, you know, you want, you want anything done, they can pretty much about do it, if it's like printing or putting a design on something. Apache Design Studio can do it for you. I even wanted some Tesla socks and they're gonna, this was before COVID, so they're, they're working on it. But yeah, they're gonna do some Tesla socks for me, but that's besides the point.
Well, point though being made that you guys have a lot of flexibility, you have a lot of great things to offer. And so the community needs to know more about that, because I don't think a lot of people realize that. And we should be broadcasting that. That's a jewel, you know? So and then the third section of the building, we have an internet access issue for a lot of our kids in school. And so we have the opportunity to develop an Amernet Cafe where kids can be here in a controlled environment and be able to conduct schoolwork, do schoolwork. And again, I, keep in mind, I don't mean this to sound greedy or wrong, but I'm thinking a bigger picture here. When you draw kids downtown, you also stand to maybe draw some families downtown. And you also draw kids' dollars downtown, because when the coffee shop opens, or when the deli across the street is open, or the Mexican restaurant down the way, or whatever the case would be, you've got more opportunities for those people to draw dollars in, our local vendors. And so it's a way, because we're, there is such thing as a good crowd, not right now. And so it's a way, because we're, there is such thing as a good crowd, not right now with, with COVID, but there will be a day again where crowds are good. And we want crowds downtown. We want dollars spent. And so that would be the entire first floor. The upstairs would be corporate suites. So, and I've had discussions with Steve James, I've had discussions with Rob Likens. I've not had a face-to-face discussion with Jeff Paner yet at Cardinal, but he's gotten the gist and material of what, uh, we presented. And that is like, I picture the carbon suites, the, the Frank Miller suites and the eco suites. So when they have personnel come to town, they have seven different suites upstairs that they will stay at. And we will actually put in that opening next to it, we're gonna, as part of the grant funding, we will put in a, like a little landscape area in there and seating, and there will be an elevator shaft in there too for accessibility to get up to the second floor. So accessibility will be addressed. Um, as you can imagine, this is a large scale project, and nothing that's going to happen without significant grant dollars. But the, and again, I'm not asking for a dollar one today, but if the grant comes through from Rural Development, believe you me, we would be, I'd be asking you to approve the match, so we can get this process started and make what is basically the cornerstone of the entire downtown come to life.
Question.
Yes.
If the whole grant was approved, what would be the city's match?
The city's match would be 20, 24, it's a 24,000? Monty? Oh!
Not just this portion.
Oh, not just this portion. Um, I'll have to ask Dave Keizer, because I know why. It's usually, he, he framed it up, the different ones he's applying for, because he's going through like five different entities. This is Rural Development initially. We've also got preservation, uh, or state, is it state historic presi? Okay, state historic. Um, there's like three others that he named off that I should have brought. I had them written down by dawn with me, unfortunately.
Yeah, community facilities.
Community facilities. There's two more. Um, and there's two more yet. And it's usually an 80 to 85% grant rate is what we're looking at. So we'd be looking at it from a 15 to 20% match. Now, are we talking a lot of dollars alarmant? Yes. But again, what good business person wouldn't want to bring in eight dollars for every two they have to spend?
We're talking about shy of a million dollars for 100, 150,000.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So that's, that's pretty good math in our favor. And the building's in use. The building's in use and it's, it's producing, and it's meeting local industry needs and.
So on the, the back step, who's going to own it?
That's what we're in discussion with right now, not the city.
Did you pull that right?
Yep.
Yeah, not, uh, I think, I think that one of the things that opens up is that the flexibility's a lot better if the city doesn't.
Right.
Own it. And that's the, that's the goal, wasn't it, to, to have that moved into another entity that can, that has more flexibility?
Exactly. And keep in mind, we're the facilitator of the project. Um, it's a much easier road to hoe to buy a restored car than to set a piece of junk on someone's front lawn and ask them to buy it. Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, so that's not, uh, that's, not to sound flippant, but that's not something I'm worried about if we facilitate this project to where it's going, because it will be, it really will be a crown jewel downtown.
Ultimately, we could get at least our money back if we do this right?
Yes. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Well, one of the things that, not just, thought before, that, uh, that when you talk about, you, and I think that the, the, that space, uh, the AM网 cafe type space that you're talking about, I think, uh, could have some far reaching possibilities as, as that goes on. Anything into, you know, video gaming competition.
Yeah.
But anybody that, anybody that, that has been around Union City for, for more than 20, 25 years knows that, and say, if you go back to the, to the late 80s, early 90s, uh, a Friday or Saturday night on, on a nice summer day would be pretty active around downtown Union City. And, and people will say, well, gee, where's everybody at now? Well, that's, you know, one of the things that you had is that you had a lot of the youth, uh, on the streets around town doing things. And it really was, there was mental problems. But a lot of youth would be in the downtown area, because that's how you socialize. And now with, with the, uh, the advent of, of social networking online, that's not, that's, everybody's sitting at home doing this, and, and so now the downtown's dead. And everybody's sitting in their bedroom or in their, someplace, and they're not out in the sun, they're not out in the air, they're not communicating, and they're, and they're, so they're, they, they think they're communicating, but they're really not.
Right.
And, and they're, so I think we can help facilitate that by, by playing both sides of that and using, using internet accessibility to drag us back to a time, you know, to a, to a different type of, of, uh, social exposure.
Right, exactly.
Well, that's, that's kind of the way I see that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll add my perspective, since we were talking about the students, this is the perfect time for me to provide some insight. You know, we were talking about the internet access. Well, I, I live outside town a little bit. The internet access is horrendous. Like, I have to use my phone to connect to my laptop to do any of my schoolwork, and even that's a hassle, because it will disconnect, and then even that's not perfect. It'd be much easier if there was high-speed internet. If there was a location here in town where I could come in, short drive, meet up with some of the other people I'm working on a project or something like that, in a singular building, that would be absolutely perfect. So you, you know, we were talking about getting the kids in there. Well, let me tell you, if, if you got an area of high-speed internet, you can guarantee you're going to get kids in there. Um, so that's just from my own perspective. So I, I highly agree what was brought up with, with getting kids in there.
And even with the, even with the County One Draw Band project, I don't think that's going to be a complete substitute for.
More than that can happen overnight either.
It does, and it's not going to happen overnight, certainly, in a couple of years. And, uh, so, and, and, you know, as Derek says, internet access is spotty where he lives.
Yeah.
He doesn't live very far. Not anywhere near the.
That's right, the edge.
Yeah, he's like, he's on the edge of it.
Yeah. I'm, I am just pretty much on the edge. There's people more rural than I am further on out. So, I mean, yeah, pretty much starting where I'm at on out, internet access is almost non-existent. If you don't have, you know, cellular connection on your phone, even that, like I said, is not excellent. So, yeah. Definitely, that is, that is a, a great strength of this project and something that you'll definitely get people attracted with using that high-speed internet.
And I also think it could be a, a great asset for the community, because it's, it's a service that is not, we don't have a, a broad, uh, local element there as far as servicing that type. There's no, there's certainly no storefront. I realize I don't want to step on any toes. There are some people that provide some services, but, but, uh, maybe some people that are involved in some of those services, maybe there's a collaboration effort.
There's, yeah.
With, with local business, and that would, that would be something that.
Absolutely, Logan. Absolutely.
Tim just said something that, uh, brought a really good point to my mind. You know, we, we would always take school trips up to the public library, and of course, they have laptops and computer screens in there. Well, every time we'd go there, there'd be somebody, you know, two or three people from the community sitting in there writing papers or, you know, non-student people, that's usually who you think are using computers and all that kind of stuff. No, it was people from the community who didn't have access to computers or any, you know, any with printing or writing or anything like that. So even that, you know, non-student related, if you have monitors, printing capabilities to extend upon what the public library already has, then that's also going to be a draw for non-student people who don't have a laptop or computer at home, they need to print or they need to write something, that would be a perfect use of that as well. So, I just maybe, Tim just said that, and he did, it made me come up with a good point. So, yeah, there's a lot of great benefits to this project.
That is awesome. And regarding that end too, people might think, oh, who's going to be able to afford computers and so forth? We actually have another gentleman who's working on, Andy at the school, is working on from his end, uh, toward, uh, different grant developers to assist with this. So, yeah, it, we're coming out from different angles to meet this need, so.
And, and sometimes people think of, of, uh, people that are, are, don't have internet service or, or things available. I had a customer this afternoon that I spoke to that, that is not, um, is, is, uh, not in a position where he can't afford anything, or, you know, or he's not in a, you know, not compromised financially or anything, but doesn't have internet, doesn't have, uh, any, uh, any television service of, of any type or anything other than a, than an antenna, because he chooses not to. And, uh, but at the same time, would probably benefit from some internet availability, knowing what's on his cell phone.
Yeah. And lure him uptown.
And, uh, and would lure him uptown.
Yeah, that's what we want. So anyway, the grant, again, he's submitting, Dave Keizer is submitting the, uh, grant, uh, electronically tomorrow and overnighting it to, um, uh, Rural Development, so it'll be, uh, there at their doorstep, the hard copy version on Wednesday. And then we should, uh, hopefully know something, we might have a hint of something, uh, by the end of May. And, and we will know definitively in June.
Okay.
So.
Uh, with people like Dave Keizer, and I'm, I'm still learning about some of his grant writing, is it just a flat 2,000, or is it 2,000, he gets a percent of what?
He, it's a flat fee, is it not, Monty?
Uh, yeah, well, um, depending on the grant, sometimes it comes out of the grant. But, uh, you know, usually, uh, what it does, he charges, I think, uh, I think it's a total of 6,000 for, for this one.
Yeah, for the entire thing, so it's not a percentage.
Okay.
Good question.
Because I don't want to skip a million dollars if we write somebody 2,000.
No, I'm, I'm with you, trust me, absolutely. Uh, so that, that is that project. So, uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, you guys' continued thoughts about this project and, and even how we can make it even better. And, uh, because we want, my goal will remain to have every building refaced, if need be, and filled downtown. And so, um, and had a great meeting last week uptown with our assistant city manager, myself, and the coffee shop owner and the deli owners, which they're partnering now with Roots, you know, and, and, yeah. And so, uh, working on the floor plans and working on the ramps for accessibility to the buildings and just, it, cool stuff. And we're thinking that, uh, this is not, uh, in stone yet, but we're thinking and hoping for like maybe a grand downtown, uh, celebration slash reopening of the downtown for Labor Day weekend.
That'd be cool.
Yeah. So just, uh, for, to, because those businesses will be open and running, and, uh, hopefully we've got some more clarity on the corner project, and they were, Dan Brispiller was with us too, and they were pressing Dan, like, it's sure nice to have a drink, Dan. And Dan's like, well, it'll be sometime in fall, for sure. But, uh, but, yeah, I have him open soon too, and just really start to create a life downtown. And, and Steve and I have been working too. I've, I've got a mayor's fund, uh, that I can use discretionary spending out of, and I've tried not to touch it at all, uh, because I'm saving for, I'm hoping to get downtown speakers for music that we play during the holidays and festivals and get together. And so, because again, I want the downtown to be a personality. I want people, I want the downtown Union City to be like that person that you love when they show up to a gathering. I love when so-and-so is here, because it's always going to be fun. That's what I want Union City downtown to be. I want it to be, I want it to be a personality that people clam for. Uh, so that's what we're shooting for. And by the way, speaking of money, uh, the, just so you guys know, uh, the letters that went out, I will try to be more efficient with the quarterly newsletters with folks. I did pay for the postage myself on those, out of my own check. It was like 600 and some dollars for the postage, but I footed the bill because it was my fault that I didn't get them in with the water bill. Because if we get them in with the power bill, then it's no extra charge to the city. So my commitment to citizens is communication, and, um, I hope they, that was conveyed through the newsletter. Uh, I am going to try to keep it for, to one page, because we can stick one page in with the water bill without incurring any extra cost. So it's going to force me not to be long-winded. So, um, any questions or comments, uh, before we, um, we have no visitors, so. Yes, Mayor, or less, Monty? Thank you. And Jan are on the same page. Yeah. Uh, Monty, if you, if you want him to go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah, Monty, if you would, go ahead and address the council regarding that.
Yes, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, they've run into, uh, a few issues that, that the, uh, during the construction that, uh, that needs a change order for. I think you have comments for that, uh, on the second page there. And, uh, the first is to add some concrete to the, uh, F1 channel. It, uh, would allow, uh, where we go, the F1 channel to keep solids from blocking up in there. That would save us a confined space entry, uh, to get out of time, clear that out. The second one is to replace an existing meter base, uh, and that was something that AEP required, before they could, uh, put the power in there. So, so that's, uh, the 1,200 dollar, uh, addition that we need. There was, uh, a liquid heater that was not put in the design for the alum, and alum tends to, uh, to want to freeze. So, uh, that's another, uh, four or 500 dollars to put a liquid heater in that space. And, uh, number four was to replace D cap valves, the digester when they dug down to, uh, to, uh, do the replacement, uh, of the line. Whenever in that, they found out that those valves were, were not functional, so they, uh, they needed to replace those, which is a big ticket item on there, that 12,853. So the total items that, that would be added to the project would be, uh, 21,978 dollars. And we do have, uh, enough money, quite, quite good money in contingency yet to cover that, so. Uh, that's where we are with that.
Questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the change orders as presented for the wastewater project.
I would make motion that we accept the change order, um, as noted for the wastewater project.
I second.
We have a first and second. Jan, if you would take a roll call vote?
Brandon Elmore.
Yes.
Bob Lahey.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Frias.
Yes.
Change order approved. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no visitors wishing to address the council, the date of the next city council meeting, and I say these dates very tentatively, but at that point, you can see, hopefully, we, we try to make these things happen. Monday, April 27th at 6:00 PM, the date of the next public board of works meeting is also Monday, April 27th at 1:00 PM. I would hereby entertain a motion to adjourn. We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.